Sure we're live. Okay, welcome back, everybody. We're in the afternoon session of May 28th. Our next agenda items are not action items. These are all budget workshops. And the first one is for fire mitigation. Mira, how was this check?
Eleven check.
Eleven check?
I haven't.
Eleven check.
And this is a brand-new budget. We don't have anything to compare it from previous years. And I think, you know, looking at these this weekend, it looks pretty good. I guess my only concern is that if we lose Stephanie this summer, you're gonna need somehow mixed here. And if we should be thinking about maybe a part-time, I don't know. Are you looking? Thinking about that? Or what do you, what's your feeling?
Yeah, and so currently, there's, I mean, if you think of it on the scale of Stephanie's been accomplishing, and she's been getting help from shared stewardship from the IDL with Tom Lillyhog. And the county hasn't funded that position at all. So really, it's been two of them for, I mean, I don't even know how many years that the IDL's really been funding that second position.
Are they gonna continue that?
No. So his, um, is also up. I think that's a big, so he's gonna be done. He's gonna help finish out this year with some of our stuff that we have going. Like Firewise grants and help Stephanie with the IDL grants, just because he's so vested, and that's just his personality. And like, technically, he's doing it out of his ability.
And John is a great guy. He's done a lot for the county.
Yes.
So you're feeling like this is a part-time or a full-time?
I mean, with the scale that we've been doing as many grants, um, especially if we're gonna be doing two to three, it could be truly a full-time position. So I guess it just depends on what the county expectations are and at the scale you guys would like to still keep these grants going. I think that's the next question, right?
We have to remind everybody that this, her salary is covered with the grant. In fact, a lot of this is covered by the grant.
Yeah.
That's going for what, four more years?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. The commissioner's four more years.
And so with that, it is covered. My salary and all of these expenses are truly covered.
Reimbursable expenses.
Yeah, they're all reimbursable. And then, one of the things that I'm starting to do is with these large western states, has their fuel reduction grants from the IDL that we're getting, I am starting to bring some revenue back into the county with covering my time or mileage, covering indirect costs based off on how many contractors I have. And so I will be bringing between twenty and forty grand depending on what is accomplished back to the county. And those are, that's typically in a two- to three-year period for those grants to get completed. So Stephanie was facilitating all of that before. Since it's in-house, we're able to bring some more to be covered later on.
And what was John doing? What was his part of that?
So he does a lot of the layout of the units. He'll do the layout, and then he'll go out there with the contractors and facilitate, like, on-the-ground truthing, making sure that they're accomplishing the right tasks.
So is that part of what you would like to remain in your job description? So where you would be out doing that work that John is doing, so we might need an admin person for the office?
I'm thinking it's gonna be kind of both. So from what I've noticed already, last week alone, my office phone had twenty missed calls, and my cellphone had fifteen for landowners. So in one week, granted, it's the busy time because everyone's just getting to their homes, right? But what I would like to see is an office person plus potentially like a community outreach person. Because I am starting to do a lot of events. I'm helping out with a lot of the fairs, with booths, um, doing pad barbecue, so different things like that. So I'd like to see where it's a little intermixed of both. Where it could be in having some fire knowledge and being able to speak on what these grants can help fund. Because it is hard to get to every HOA meeting, like, Saturday, there's three of them. And ideally, it'd be nice if I could help with one other person. And that's where we're gonna get our buy-in, is going to those HOAs, right? Because that one's there.
Mara, you talked earlier about the revenue that's coming back in, the twenty to forty thousand, that comes back to the county, not you, correct?
Correct, to the county.
I just wanna make sure we understand that. Mike, I know she's been talking with you about this. Do you have any suggestions or recommendations?
I think right now, my recommendation would be that Stephanie probably moves through the end of this year. There's a couple of grants that she's got that she's...
You should probably be on the microphone.
There's a couple of grants that Stephanie's currently working under, I believe, right now, that I would probably say, and she's also administering those, that we probably just let her cruise through those, close those out. It gets Mara a complete season under her belt, and then lets her go and kind of regroup, reassess, and say, okay, moving forward. Because that's when Stephanie plans on moving out of the program completely. And then say, okay, what do we want to do for the future moving forward? In talking with Mara, she and I were talking about, you know, would that look like, okay, obviously, things have to happen. We have to find funding sources for any position that we would hire. Do we want an in-house or somebody that's out in the field? Would we be looking at part-time? Would we be looking full-time? Job description, salary, all that. Basically, what we did a year ago with her position, uh, we would do, but not right now. I don't think right now would be when I would recommend it.
Mara, isn't that extra person covered by the grant as well?
No. Mara's...
I thought it was a one-and-a-half position.
So it is just...
There was potential.
Yeah, it's five hundred thousand dollars. You divide that over five years. So we're taking a hundred and one of it this year to cover Mara and her expenses this year. So it will simply cover Mara. The thing that we need to start considering, first of all, with budget, we're not talking about hiring the person today. We're talking about hiring them once Stephanie's gone in October.
Correct.
So we do need to think about that for this budget, so that we have monies for next year. Secondarily, who knows if this will ever be refunded? We need to start building some capacity for Mara's division into the future. So after five years, we know that Valley County can take this project forward if you continue to fund this at a level that allows us this opportunity to have this, you know, position in-house.
It's gonna be sustainable somehow.
I personally would just like to add that, you know, if you had an administrative person, there's other natural resource work that needs to be done within the county. We need Mara to build to her strengths, which is fire, but also maybe build some other capacity to do some other work in the future. So this is gonna be a division that's gonna, you know, go on into the future. Right now, I just, I think you may need an admin person. I don't know what the rest of that looks like yet either.
So are you thinking maybe thirty hours a week?
I don't... You know, personally, we're not gonna find people, I'm afraid, at that. You know, you gotta hire at forty hours a week. But admin's an entirely different conversation than hiring somebody at Mara's capacity. It costs us a lot more money to replace Mara than it does to allow her some administrative function and potentially working with grants and that kind of thing, especially in the absence of a grant writer right now. So if we were to build something in here, I would think that we're building an admin person for right now.
So part-time, half-time?
No, full-time.
Full-time?
Yeah.
So what's, uh, what does that position start at, Mike? We looking at per hour on a basis?
I would think for an administrative position like that, minimum, you'd be looking probably twenty dollars an hour to start. So figure forty, forty-two grand a year, top, put benefits on top of that. Fifty-five, sixty grand a year, probably.
Only thing that gives me pause... I mean, if we had SRS fully funded, I would say that, you know, we'd be able to fund that through Title III. Right now, we don't know if Title III's gonna be there in the future, so that concerns me a minute. But I think we have to plan on it anyway, and then we have to adjust accordingly. If we don't get Title III, then...
And providing back even thirty thousand a year of revenue, that makes that a lot easier to take.
That'd be for two to three years. And so those grants, it's how you facilitate the grant. So the grants typically are a three-year period, and you can extend them for four. So that thirty grand, thirty to forty grand would be over in that amount of time that grant is being...
Does that come at the end of the grant or all through the grant?
It comes throughout the whole grant, so it's whenever I put in the reimbursement. So you can do a monthly reimbursement if you like. Currently, McKenzie was doing, um, twice a year for the grants.
I just don't think that we need to rely on the grant income. I don't think it's gonna be in that really, I mean, it's not like...
That was paid for tax.
And it's like anything in government, if we have the money, we can do it. If you don't, then you have to start cutting stuff out, but... I want your feelings on this, too.
Mr. Chairman, you know me, with adding new positions, that reduces the amount that you can give existing positions increases. But if you are, have identified this truly as a need, and it is something that the commissioners need to strongly consider, but I do caution that whenever we create a new position, it reduces the amount that you can give in increases, unless you can identify an additional revenue source besides property taxes.
So Mara, if you, you go through this year, I mean, this whole summer, and you got all your Firewise projects, and you could get them completed, and Stephanie gets hers completed and whatnot, will you need that individual soon or this time next year?
It would be ideal, truly, for next April. Because that's right when we start doing the Firewise grants. Really, if it is an admin position, that's when I have the resources right now. Stephanie is facilitating the Firewise grants. I'm helping, but she's doing a lot of the paperwork herself.
So it'll probably be not May, but maybe March, because that's when things really wind up. I don't...
I mean, it'd be ideally, because all the reimbursements happen throughout the whole year, right? Because I have my GNA grant, I have IDL grants, and then now I'm gonna get another eighty thousand, like, I'm gonna, and then Firewise grants. So I have three different kinds of grants that we administer for the county, just within the department.
So now the money that you said you'd be bringing in possibly, could that be used for wages?
It just goes back in...
Comes back in a general fund.
Which, yes, it will reduce the amount that you have to levy for property taxes.
Yeah.
Yep, yep. Okay.
And so there was talk, um, within of original conception of the GNA grant for this being potentially two positions, right? I'm sure you guys are aware of that. But they originally just went with one, just to fill it and create a new department. So maybe that is something we bring up to Ryan and Keyshawn and see if we can extend more funding to help bring another position. But that's gonna have an ending as well, just kind of like mine does. It's after five years.
They also talked about if we needed more funds, they could get us, they thought they could get us more funds.
And so they got us eighty grand to do one. So that's part of the concept, too, right, is they're also wanting to receive funds to actually do some landscape fire management work. And so there are, like any federal money, it's available when it's available. So they were able to get us eighty grand. They got Boise County seventy or eighty grand, although they got Adams County as well. So they have pulled the money on top of that. They just have it.
Well, I know, basically, you've got your salary covered for four more years, correct?
This and four more.
Yes.
You can use Title III. So I've talked to other county where they actually have my position as an in-house county employee, and they do Title III to cover.
That's what we're using to cover Stephanie right now.
Correct.
How much, do you know how much that is?
On average, I think, you know, with sixty-two...
So that money's gonna be available, right?
As long as we get SRS funds. Anything else, you never know. Year to year, it might come, next year, it might not, right?
Yeah, but as long as you get it, you budget for it, and you spend it, and they're not gonna take it away in the middle.
I think budget for an admin position, personally.
Like a seasonal?
Again, no, I think it needs to be full-time. If you think about Stephanie, she worked here around, I mean, it wasn't something that she really had ups and downs. I mean, they're starting in February, working on all of the small Firewise grants. But I think more importantly, if there is administrative support there, it allows more grants to be researched and facilitated. And so the opportunity to bring in more funding is there. But I think with budget, hell's right, if it's, if the funds are not there, they're not there. We'll have to make some tough choices at that moment in time.
Why don't we think about, uh, or not a part-time, but whatever you wanna call it, administrative assistant, for around fifty, fifty-five thousand? And then let's see what we have at the end as far as budget, because we do wanna do raises, all that, too. There's a lot of things. But I think if we can remember that yours is covered by the grant, Stephanie's covered, we can, we'll get those funds that used to go to her, we can use those. As long as we get SRS, I think will be great. It won't come out of the general fund.
What is, I mean, Stephanie's, basically, you guys funded her through, or we have been funding her through SRS now for quite some time. I don't know that she gets that much money from those grants. And that's kind of, to her, we don't have any, um, feedback on that. I have no idea what kind of administrative fees she's getting.
Well, you, like, the border we played eight today, that was Stephanie's bills or what the different things she did throughout the month. We don't have the hours on it, the actual amount of time, but those are the different functions.
Those came from SRS. So she's getting these grants, those two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grants, she's getting an admin fee on top of that. So our payment to her is not the only funding that she's receiving.
She's also receiving between her life of the grant, right, so I'm saying three or four years. She, the insurance cost for her is thirty-five grand. So it's, it's not every year.
Back to the county now.
Yes, that's coming back to the county now.
Okay.
He was getting, he was administrating.
We're gonna make that work by doing that.
And then we just track it for a year or two and see how it works.
Exactly. And I think on your side of it, you would track it in the fact that I don't really need this person in December, January, February.
At that moment, she might be able to administrate it work for her person rep, because they're in the same area. I mean, or assist the grant writer, or, you know, do some of that other stuff.
Because we don't wanna lose that person.
It's very difficult to hire or tie people like this with capacities.
That work. So are we in agreement on the fifty to fifty-five thousand for...
So Doug, you can have it... I would, I apologize, Commissioner, but what I would recommend is, Mike, conduct a, a study or a point factor analysis, what we called it before. And then come back to Mara and to the commissioners with a range for this position. I think right now, I, I apologize, I think he's shooting from the hip.
Absolutely.
Um, so I think that it would make more sense for him to do an analysis of this position, create a job description first, and then analyze where this would fit in the existing range that Valley County has established, bringing that back to Mara, bringing that back to the commissioners, and then budgeting for that position.
We also, you need to fill out the STAR guidelines if you have not already done that. Add this, improve service transparency, accountability, liability.
Yeah, let's go down through your B budget real quick. The travel and the, um, vehicle fuel, I guess what I'm concerned about is if you, you have a vehicle now,
Yes.
you've got access to the fuel and all that stuff.
Correct.
But I'm concerned about that being enough.
Yes, and that's what I'm not really aware of, right, because I started the position, um, and I only had the vehicle for about a month. I had hardly put about three hundred miles on it, so I can't pretty think right now. Just doing home inspections and stuff like that. So, I mean, it was kind of just a guestimate, and I was basing it off of what my assistants did. I was gonna say, um, drive around a lot, I was assessing homes. So that's kind of what I did there for this.
Um, what, do you know what the mileage of your vehicle is? Guess mileage? A twenty-two is true. So we're gonna get about, what is that?
What are you doing, three hundred miles?
Thousand miles? Not quite a thousand miles? I don't know if that's enough, Doug. I would be in favor of dropping that two thousand up to three at least.
Commissioners, we need, we need to take this into consideration, that this position, this department is being reimbursed by the GNA. So if you're increasing, you're gonna be using property taxes to fund it, right? What we tried to do is establish a budget that is going to be directly reimbursed from the GNA grant.
So then we'll just have to track it, and if we go over, we go over.
And so that's what's creating a budget for after five years, truly, right? That's kind of the goal, is to set one right now, and in the future, see where it actually lies. Since there's no way to create it, where everyone else is basing their margins off of prior years.
Okay, Doug, just a question from my own little brain, like supplies office, that's under the grant.
Correct.
But then, does that include power and broadband and all that?
That's all paid for out of the general fund. That is not being...
That's out of our fund?
Correct, that's out of what we need to...
That's a great start.
That's, it's a start. Watch it.
I mean, I don't know if it's time to bring it up, but Stephanie's contract is done August, right? Her grants, she's facilitating the two IDL grants. Those don't technically expire. So facilitating those and continuing on the ground work for the next couple of months. Contract, she is willing to be extended if needed.
I would say we would extend the contract to probably December first. I'm guessing.
I mean, that's up to you guys.
Same day, same, it's just an extension.
I, I think we need to talk about that a bit. I think we need to figure out, I mean, paying somebody seventy-two hundred dollars a month for finalizing a grant might be a bit much.
Well, then you'd have to get more, or you'd have to take that function over.
I think that we compare by the hour or something, you know, for the work that she's actually doing.
Fifty dollars?
I would like to know, I'd just like to know what that closeout's gonna look like. What is, you know, what's the workload gonna look like, that type of thing, before that decision is made.
Well, she won't be doing a lot of the Firewise stuff. She's just gonna be taking grants.
Firewise hopefully will be done, um, Labor Day, and they should be all getting their reimbursements by then, so that's right around that time. Typically, when we end those Firewise grants, she is facilitating all paperwork for this small Firewise grants, which would be right around that time. And then the IDL grants, really, September's still fieldwork stuff, so there still might be contractors that she has hired through Valley County that will be doing on-the-ground work still for September or October, potentially, right? Who knows? She might be able to get all the work done by then. This is just a scenario, right?
Let's just have her come in and we'll talk to her about it. Just finalizing that. I don't, you know, as far as in this budget, though, I mean...
This budget doesn't...
Yeah, I think we just need to communicate with her on what she's got left to finish up after. Budget cycle, so. And then we'll maybe come to some kind of agreement on an hourly or something like that. She's done a huge job in getting this program started, so I'll take care of the help. Hey, nothing else? You're all good? All right? That's all we need.
Thank you.
It's started.
Thanks, Mara.
This all works.
Okay, and the next budget is human resources. Mike, come on up. And yours is in here.
Who sent those? That wasn't part of our packet, was it?
Yeah.
I remember looking at them, but I'm...
They should be in there.
HR. So, Mike, welcome. Good to see you again.
See you.
We're only talking B budget, as you know, and dropped some and you raised some, so let's start off with travel mileage. That one went up quite a bit, forty-one hundred. Are you traveling more?
Um, I've got a trip this, actually, next month, in June, I'm gonna be traveling for HR.
So these are all conferences, conventions, though?
Yeah.
Okay. And then you dropped return registration fees. You're including that in what?
Um, just putting it all on the top line.
I think putting it all on the travel, the mileage, probably. That would be the event, the cost for the event, the travel there, airfare, lodging.
So do you like it that way? Do you want it broken out?
This is the way that, uh, you can determine that, uh, budget for HR made sense. But we couldn't...
So you're still, you're still at twenty-one hundred on that? What other conferences are you gonna be doing that Pat didn't do?
The only one I would plan on doing would be the SHRM conference, the annual SHRM conference. I thought Pat...
Went to that one, too.
She was, she had it budgeted. She didn't go last year. I don't know about previous years, but that's the conference that, that's the only one I would do.
Okay.
Yeah.
So why are we going up so high, then?
So let's see, uh...
I mean that...
Mileage would have been just airfare before, and it's, that's, it's, that's all it would be for this. It wouldn't be any more than, I would even take it to a thousand for the airfare. Lodging is unfortunate. They're not gonna have those in small cities. Those are gonna be in cities. That's, three, four hundred a night for that, for, that's a couple of thousand for that. And the event itself, I wanna say, is about eighteen hundred. Yeah, those three together comes to probably about the fifty-five.
Well, I see what you're... I know Pat did go to the...
Let's see what you're doing.
Conference. I don't know how she broke it out differently, but...
Well, I think as long as you've got it on some line somewhere, we're okay. I would much more prefer that you put it in the registration for, like, hotels and conferences, so that we kind of know, uh, for the taxpayer.
Break it out more, more, that's fine.
Then let's go on down and look at cellphone. You went to four eighty. That's, what do you get, fifty a month? You don't have a county phone.
I have a county phone. I do. And I'd like to keep a county phone rather than have my own.
Doug, why is that so, buddy? Is that what a county phone costs a year?
Bear with me, I'll tell you what his phone costs.
Need to have an in-house drug testing deal, though. Oh, you should make a lot of money on that. Well, you can make a lot of money.
I'm not doing it.
And we're putting somebody else out of work, and we would hear that we're competing against private industry.
You don't do that, do you? Or you have to have it done?
We have, we sent him over to the Cascade Medical Center.
You gotta have a third party do that.
It's going up, and we're... We tell them, we should have the conversation about that.
So, Mr. Chairman, it's thirty-seven dollars a month for his phone. Okay, so that's where you got the four eighty, okay. So then, let's go on down, contingency's the same, security's the same. We jumped up background checks, two hundred bucks, and then we jumped up employee drug testing, thirty-five hundred. And then you dropped four grand off of training.
So, Mike, the employee drug testing, you took it up thirty-five hundred. Have you been notified of an increase in...
Just, I think more than anything, it's volume that we see. Cost seems to be about the same. Yet, we're doing pre-employment, which is obviously, you know, we're bringing in however many, I have, what, fifty people a year? So that's not a lot there. But we do random drug testing four times a year, and that's on everybody in the road department, and anybody who potentially drives for a portion of their job.
Including now planning and zoning, building department?
Yeah.
Because you got a lot of people in there.
Sheriff's office, road department, planning and zoning, parks, building, um, core services.
Anybody liable out on the road.
And you're already over on your budget for that, aren't you?
Oh, yeah.
Correct, that's why we... Fifty-four seventy-two, so, yeah, we, we should raise that.
And we do post-accident testing, and we do reasonable suspicion testing, which is nothing on the reasonable suspicion, but post-accident. It's smart to do, uh, for liability purposes, anytime anybody in the road department sees them, roll the spellies. They get a fender bender, even if they're not the ones that fall, we haven't got to take them.
Like, like the grader going down the road.
Yeah, he tested that. They were hand, holding his hand as they walked him over there. We can have a conversation about that one, because, you know, it's a lot. And it's not going down. And quite honestly, there's a lot of talk about whether or not, you know, the legality of asking government employees to drug test because of their Fourth Amendment rights. There's a lot of entities that do not, at least not pre-employment, or random. They'll do post-accident and reasonable suspicion, but they won't do the others, and that would cut out quite a bit if we were eating crunch.
So is the random legal? Or is that still...
That's the only attorney you talk to, Commissioner, whether it's legal or not.
I think we've got, we've got to consider on this is what ICRI wants.
OIL.
This is what ICRI wants. This is what we got to do.
Right. But a lot of people would say, well, not say, it's a reality, a government employee is also a private citizen. We are a government entity, basically saying, we want you to give us something of yourself without a warrant. And there it is, the question, can we do that?
At-well employment. So therefore, this is what you're gonna have to do in order to work here. They can make that choice, they don't have to give it to us. They can choose to work somewhere else.
We've not had anybody put back on it.
Is it written up in your documents that they sign when they get employed?
We say it, we ask, ask it in the interview. Say it right in the job interview.
Okay. Okay, so training and development, you cut that at four grand and you only spent thirty-six fifty-five last year. Are you sure you're?
Yeah, I'm way down on that one also.
And now, you're comfortable with that?
I wish we were doing more training and honestly, the way I would prefer to do training is with a different methodology. Typical training right now would be, you have a small group, maybe, first of all, we should be doing, I should be doing respectful workplace training for everybody annually, but ICRAP offers that free. That's something that, that's just a hundred percent on me, but we're talking about maybe crucial conversations training, customer service training, things like this, where we hire a trainer to come in, they meet with a group, fifteen, twenty people or whatever, they charge a couple of thousand dollars for that training and off they go. Limited to almost no value to most of the staff here. There are tools out there that would be, that would be available to supervisors. It's basically, they're tools called a learning management system or an LMS. I've actually got some information here on one offered through BO Gov. They're the same organization, we do all of our recruitment. A system like this, there would be a catalog of trainings that supervisors could go through. This particular one has about fifteen hundred different trainings that they could offer to their staff. It could be on everything from customer service to intermediate, to beginner writing, to mathematics, Word, Excel, Outlook, anything like that, to more specific trainings depending upon their field of work. Supervisor could assign that training to their staff, it goes to them in an email form, they log into their account, they go through the training, the trainings can be videos, they could be interactive, they could be, okay, we're gonna stop, we're gonna have a quiz, whatever it might be. And then the employee finishes it, the supervisor's notified that they took it, that they passed it, or that they failed it, and that goes into their permanent record. There would be no, on a true, or on a plan like this, it'd be, again, literally hundreds of different trainings, we could even upload our own trainings into a system like that, so if we had somebody come, we were videoing them, monitor, you know, recording the training, we could upload that training for those that didn't catch it at the time. Percy comes, gives a presentation on their stuff, we could record it and we could have it uploaded into our system. Employees in a system like this could go through that list as well, and they could pick their own trainings if they wanted it. You know, there's a lot of times, we all have something that we're fidgeting, but we don't want anybody to know because we're embarrassed about it.
Well, and, you know, nowadays, I mean, you see so many kids that are coming up, you know, their social skill is right here.
Right.
And so, if you're gonna be in a position where you gotta deal with the public.
Right.
You need social skills, and training like that is invaluable.
Absolutely.
Because that's, I mean, you're dealing with the public and too many of them nowadays, they won't even look you in the eye, they just, it's like, it's, it's a different world we're dealing with, but you still gotta deal with the public.
Right.
I'm wondering if we should think about maybe training for, like, part of the onboarding process. After they're onboarded, a new employee, maybe it's gonna be a front desk or.
Absolutely.
Maybe here's some things that we're gonna ask for you to take online through this, or whatever you've come up with.
There would be, there would, depending on the job with a system like this, you could say, okay, your first week on the job, we've got six trainings that we run through, uh, or whatever it might be. There's also trainings on, like I said, a lot of different computer program software packages that are out there, but we can also, if there was, say, assuming that they would allow us to upload it, but say ITD had proprietary software that our DMV was using, could we upload that training into the system? Probably so, because it would have all the proper disclaimers as to who owned the copyright and whatnot. But, yeah, on your first week, here's the trainings that you need to go through and whatnot. I've got supervisors coming to me, I've got supervisors coming to me now saying, I got people I don't know what, you know, can even write. These would have assessments that we can run somebody through, that they could go and see, okay, can you take a beginner writing course and pass it?
So, ICRAP has always had the online training, and it was a mandatory training to improve our insurance premiums. So, I don't think that we have done any mandatory training in last year.
Not long, it's been too long.
Okay.
I agree entirely.
Okay, so we need to get that done. But how would that integrate in this, and what is the cost of this?
So this, yes, I do have a cost, it's, so it's an expensive program. Um, and that's where, when talking with Doug earlier about this, I was thinking, under my training budget, I'd be willing to sacrifice the entirety of my training budget for something like this. Like anything, it's got an implementation fee, and then it's got ongoing fee. The latest quote that I've got, which is good for this year that we're in, has an implementation fee of fifty-two hundred with an ongoing of twelve thousand a year. Now, that's the full-blown package, that's for a hundred and fifty staff. It could be something that we could get into and realize it's not worth it. We're not using it enough. It might be something that we would use for a year or two and start to see participation drop off. It would require supervisors to issue the trainings to the staff, to their staff, and say, I want you to take these trainings.
To be mandatory.
Yeah. And so they would have to see the value in something like this. I know I can talk to managers and supervisors about this, it sounds great, it does to me, too. But the proof is in the pudding, whether or not we would actually use it, but there is no contract like, okay, we commit to five years or anything like this. The fact that we've already got the system in-house means that it would be easy to implement into our process that we have, everybody's already got. Anybody who's, anybody new who works for us now, they log into this, every one of our managers is logged into this system. It's the same login and password process, they would just simply have another tab at the top of the page for training.
If we were to do this, we'd have to come up with twelve grand, and then it's whatever that, your training is that cost? We don't know what that.
So it would be, we would have to come up with seventeen grand just to get, it would be five thousand to start it, and then twelve thousand a year to maintain it, but that gives us access to all the trainings, as much as we wanted to use.
Free of charge.
Free of charge, but it's twelve grand a year for the county to allow all of our people as much access to it as possible.
So, as a HR person talking to supervisors, I would assume that people are gonna wanna take these during work time.
Yes.
So, that would be the other question for the division leads and the elected officials. Are you going to allow your employees to do this during work time?
If it was a matter of a mandatory training, they would have to do it during work time, they would have to say, take an hour this week to take this training or whatever, just like a respectful workplace training would be. If the employee wanted to access this, uh, on their own time for their own betterment, that would be something they would be doing on personal time.
What does the ICRAP charge for the classes that they offer?
What I'm aware of is the respectful workplace, and they charge nothing. And that's one, like I just said, we absolutely.
I think they have cybersecurity trainings. We should see what they.
I would think so, I would think, cause those are risk, high-risk, uh, topics.
Right. I would like to see us doing more management training. I mean, Pat was doing a lot of that, whether it's you doing it or somebody else doing it. I think we need to train that next level of managers in there. Giving the employees the opportunity to improve their, their, um, job skills and outlook. Offering some of these other classes, I think would be great if we can find the money to do it. But, right now, I think we need to identify what's most important, the improvement of customer service and, you know, the working with the general public, and see where we can get it at the least cost. This is easy because we're already using it.
Right.
But is it our only option?
It's not our only option.
I don't think it is.
It's pretty spendy, too.
It is, it is very spendy.
You use it or not, they still do it, twelve grand a year.
Yeah.
I think looking at what ICRAP offers first would be the first avenue.
Okay.
And then seeing what we need to add to that. Um, NACO also has a lot of training available, and I don't, I know that we're not taking advantage of it, but, um, if we go to the annual conference, we always get one to three comps through NACO. So there is opportunities there for management training, and that's been through, Gabby's been through it, I think a number of people who have been through that management training also. Maybe looking at different packages to see what, what we can get. Most vain for our buck? I do think we need the mandatory training, uh, um, whatever it is, ICRAP has. Respectful workplace, I think is important for, first of all, our insurance premiums. Cybersecurity is important, I think, we need to get that done as soon as possible.
Well, and looking at the total budget, you've only gone up a little over two grand, which is, I think, pretty phenomenal. But I agree with Sherry, some of these trainings, I think, are probably pretty good. We'd have, to me, to get our money back, we'd have to make a mandatory. I don't know if departments are willing to do that. You know.
We might not.
We have to, um, feel it out and see how they.
Right.
And then if we can find something cheaper, always.
Let's step forward, this is one I can absolutely say has to be a mandatory training, that's not, nobody would argue.
Yeah. Okay.
Cybersecurity also.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Sherry.
All right, thank you.
And I'm assuming, Doug, you're doing the corner?
I thought he was gonna be reimbursing, Mr. Chairman, for your service, but it does not appear that he's.
He's here, so.
Was that on his behalf?
Hopefully he's not busy. That's always the one you always hope, that he's not busy.
Good point. His budget didn't really change at all.
Didn't change at all, it's true.
So I think we're good with that.
It didn't change?
No.
I thought his salary went way up.
That was last year, two years ago.
That wasn't last year, you're right. We increased it to like two-thirds of whatever it was, or something.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, we, uh, there is an increase in investigations, but at this point in time, uh, hang on one second, we.
Well, he, we budgeted thirty last year and he's used nineteen-four of the fifth so far. But he got, grew up to twenty-six in twenty-twenty-two. Is that in cover the toxicology and all that stuff?
That's where we, we just got an MOU between Valley County and ISP. Uh, so I need to consult with the coroner to determine if that is in fact going to stay the same, if the cost is gonna stay the same. We just recently have a new agreement that has been vetted by the prosecuting attorney's office, but I need to talk with him regarding the cost. And it is, it's a new agreement now required for ISP forensic services, and that's for forensic toxicology analysis and other forensic services, so I need to speak with.
So is that part of the thirty thousand?
That's where it would be expended from, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
That specifically, though, is for our cost to the Ada County Coroner's Office.
Oh.
For the autopsies of that nature, so I don't, I don't know if it is gonna be broken out or not. So I need to speak with, uh, Mr. Carver to determine if he in, uh, considered that when he provided us with his budget request.
So, investigation, I mean, just through Bay, he's almost twenty thousand dollars.
Correct.
If that keeps on that track, he's gonna go well over.
He's gonna go over this, this one.
That MOU with ISP. It did it.
I'm waking everybody up. Well, let's just hold this, when this one looks good until we hear back from him. We'll have to make the adjustment then. There's no more questions on this?
On his assistant, Doug, it's still just, what, quarter time?
It's, they're on an on-call basis, Commissioner Moplin, uh, and right now, he is utilizing them maybe once a month.
Oh, is that all?
Yeah, it's not that often, but when they are on call, they, no matter what, they're giving a hundred dollar per DM, and then any time they actually have to go out in the field, they're giving an hour of the day.
I know that, I just happened to meet his assistant the other day, and she's going through all of the coroner classes, so she'll be fully certified.
Good.
So, yeah, at that moment in time, you know, I don't know how much he needs, but.
So probably.
Okay. We're done, done with budgets, we'll go back to our regular agenda, we're right on time. The next item is an action item, this is Valley County Extension Office. Discussion decision related to the use of Valley County Fair and Rodeo Facebook page? I don't know why they're not on it, but.
Who's presenting this one?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, there was a concern that there was a member of the community that was utilizing that page that wasn't directly involved with the Valley County Fair and Rodeo, and I thought that Allison Stats with the University of Idaho Extension Office, her four-H program was gonna be providing a presentation to the Commissioners regarding this matter.
I could speak to this a little bit, uh, just from the commit, or the Fair Board meeting that we've had. Um, the lady, I wish I had her name down, I don't.
Sharon Bixler?
Sharon Bixler. To be a member of the Fair Board. And now she's not, hasn't been for a few years. She keeps making posts like as if she's part of the Fair Board and on Facebook. That's what, it's causing problems.
So how does that work? Is there somebody that says, kicks them off, or, I don't know if Facebook even tells them?
I don't know how you would get her to stop.
Sharon owns that other page. And that's the problem, is that she is the owner of that other page. There was another page created like two years ago or three years ago. Um, but they really would like to have back that name of that page. Now, you can, through legal means, remove that person. So, they could actually take and file suit in order to get back that page. But right now, she's the owner of it, and that was.
That's where the issues come, she won't stop. They've asked her to stop posting.
They have?
Yeah, they've asked her to stop, please stop posting, as if you're part of our Fair Board, and she won't do that. It's, it's frustrating.
So Brian, what, you got any comments on this one? I don't know anything about Facebook, you guys, other than I.
It's way over my pay grade, I, I don't know.
I'm gonna see what she's still.
She is, listen, come on up.
I was loading all the drone equipment and I had this, I think I have it somewhere right now. I'm so sorry.
We are at the, uh, one forty-five, it's the Facebook page issue.
Yeah, in regards to, I believe the last name is Stone, Sharon, and we need her to take down a Facebook page.
Is this Sharon Bixler?
Or maybe that is Bixler.
And she runs North, or North Shore Lodge.
And she, I'm sorry?
She is managing North Shore Lodge, same Sharon?
She did years ago, I don't know if she's, is she still? I don't know.
She was.
I just know that she's not affiliated with the Fair Board anymore, and she's been asked to stop posting to represent, to get the information out unless, because what's, what's being put out isn't correct. Um, the Valley County seal was used in one of her posts. And also, uh, our open class superintendent, her private information was posted, her name and her phone number on this, and we just need to shut this down.
And you have asked her to stop and she has not?
Carl's asked her, I know there's been a few multiple attempts, I think Jenny was gonna try one more time, but it's, I think their most recent post was May eighth.
So I'm on the Valley County Fair and Rodeo page, and it says, I've been notified that the new Fair and Rodeo information can be found on the following site, and she gives them our website, but this was May sixteenth of twenty-twenty-two. There has been no post since then.
Is there anything that's been posted since then, or? So.
Saying the Cascade Chamber.
Aleah, look it up, cause I'm not much of a Facebook.
Chamber Facebook page is also another site, so basically, back in twenty-twenty-two, she said, you know, here's the other two sites, so what site are we asking?
I don't know. Well, just, she shouldn't be posting information that isn't.
Well, unfortunately, everybody posts on Facebook with, you know.
Yeah.
Information that's not correct, so she's doing it on her personal face, or Facebook page, there's nothing we can do about that.
She can put the seal on there.
Anybody can put, well, no, she can't use the Valley County seal, and we can address that issue. But I need to know what she's actually posting and on what page.
Okay, I asked for a kind of snapshots from Aleah, and she was able to do that for me. So I can forward you that.
So what? What legal avenue do we?
So what, what legal avenue do we have? Anything?
Well, you can't, she can't be using the county seal.
Oh, it's depend, she, the county seal is on one of them, but it was a reshare of the Valley County Sheriff's Office. I mean, I do that all the time. You know, so it's, give us examples of what she is doing, so.
You're saying the last post was May of last year?
Twenty twenty-two.
So maybe she's got the message.
Um.
If it's on her.
The last post was made on May fourth, so she is still actively posting on it. And so.
So tell me the name of the site, then, that she's actually posting on.
I'm sorry, it's making me sign in. It doesn't. U of I has lots of blocks too for Stan.
I don't see anything on her personal page.
Regardless if she's still posting, we need, I don't know. What avenue we have to get her to stop.
You have to get legal counsel. I mean, you have to physically sue for, to remove them. But I want to know, I mean, Facebook, yeah, we'd all like to tell people to quit posting stuff, myself included. But i- if she's posting on Valley County, she can't post on Valley County's page. Um, so we have to figure out exactly where she's doing that. If it's Valley County Fair and Rodeo, is there maybe a different name? Valley County Fair? Okay. So.
Yes, this is mine. I have to use a dual authentication. Don't believe I'm on your wife.
Twenty-six. Okay, wait. So there's something. Okay, May fourth, Valley County Fair and Rodeo, vendors wanted. Is that the one that she is? And there's been something.
We don't have a Facebook page. So for Valley County Fair and Rodeo, so if there is one up, as far as I know, we don't.
Thought we recreated one two years ago. McKenzie was working with you to recreate a page? That not happen, or?
So who is Valley County Fair and Rodeo, then? Who's that person behind that?
That's Sharon Bixler.
Okay. So.
So maybe she needs to stop and desist, is what she needs to do.
Who owned that page, Allison? Was Sharon just the person from Valley County Fair and Rodeo that was managing that page? Did she actually create the page?
Fair Board years ago.
Did she create the page? Was she the owner of that page? I don't, I don't know the legalities behind it, but if I create a page, I'm the owner. If I choose not to give it up, you know, but if I am, if someone has created a page, if McKenzie had created a page, and I was managing it on behalf of Valley County Fair and Rodeo, then I could be removed as that person that's working on it. That's the way I understand it. If I create a page, I can create any page I want. It's my page. So.
Yep, it's got an name thereafter.
If you're, if you're getting uh, another entity, and there's, gotta be some ramifications there if you're.
That's what.
It's like false accusations, what it sounds like to me.
So why don't I send you the information I have and we can all take a good look at it? And see if we can't send a message out or just to kind of please me. We want to keep some of those that are working and volunteering for the Fair Board, their private information confidential. And you can refer people to the website, um, or the email. And they can get back to you in correspondence. And maybe there's some information she can help us post, but not as, as herself and not Valley County.
Brian, you got any suggestions? This is way over my pay grade.
So I'm, I'm not prepared today to give you a legal opinion about what your options are, but if you would compile the, compile the information that's out there and submit it, we can do some research and give you some options to consider. But it sounds like we're not quite certain who's posting what and when and, and all of that. So I need to kind of gather up the information, evidence, get it submitted, so we can evaluate it and then look at what the legal, uh, legal options are for the board and for Fair.
Would you like that on printed paper? Do you want it electronically?
Uh, yeah, just through the normal RLA system. Send it to Katrina. We'll compile it all up. Turn it into a legal project and do some research and.
So Allison, can you do that?
Yep. I'll just send, I'll just send you everything I have and I'll ask any of the other Fair Board members. If they have anything else they want to add to it, and then I'll, I'll send it on over and let's see if we can just get her to shut it down. Maybe just like a formal request would be enough.
So Allison, have you guys talked about, uh, creating a Valley County Fair Board Facebook page?
Not that I know of. I don't know.
I mean, would that, would that be, I mean, I'm just, Facebook page is a great place to get information out.
It just would be somebody who would help keep it current, put it, thing on it, and I don't know. It would be a great resource. Am I going to man it for Fair Board right now? I don't know if that's one way I'm going to agree to at this time. But I will ask them if there's somebody that would be willing to do it, or. I do, I think it's a great social media. We all know it's.
I think that's something we need to talk about at the next February one meeting and, and just have that discussion. Because more way to, you know, get information out to the, you know, the public. I think that's a good way to do it.
This person's not on the board. Where is she getting the information that is going on?
It's mine.
Okay, so this is an action item. We need a motion to authorize Allison to send this material to our prosecuting attorney for further investigation. That work?
And I think if there were any meeting minutes during that time, I mean, the flat said, as a board, would you volunteer to create this page on our behalf? Then she can, you can remove her easily. If no one ever asked her to do it, and she did it on her, on her own behalf, uh, it becomes more, you know, it becomes more of a challenge.
Done what she has for.
If there's anything that says that she was directed on behalf of the fair to do that, that's a much better conversation for the outcome, I think. Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve for Allison to research the Valley County Fair and Rodeo Facebook page and to relay all information to the prosecuting attorney's office for resolution.
Yep. So. Okay, we got a motion in a second. Oh, in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Be careful here, because Sharon did do a lot of good stuff, so.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. And maybe it's just a formal request, as I'm saying, maybe it comes from, uh.
We've been talking about this for two years, so I don't understand why it's still, you know, under her.
Well, the latest was putting Linda's information out too. It's like, oh, can't, no. I'm so, we're so lucky to have this volunteer running that building and doing all that work, so.
I don't see that post anywhere.
Okay.
But.
But I think there might be another link, and that's what I need to look.
Yeah. That goes, however it's linked up, because all she's doing right now is replicating what anything else is giving out as far as where there's fairs and that kind of stuff.
As of today's date? Okay. Maybe she all that through and I'll have it's like given Facebook, look at all that.
I'm happy to give her a call.
My twenty-something. Okay, yeah. But there was another, I believe there might even be another site, so I'll find out.
Yeah, we had talked two years ago about creating a Facebook and a website. So I don't know where all that fell, but I know that there was conversations with McKenzie, but.
Updating what we have on our website for Valley County. That's still going on in progress, but I don't know that anyone's taken a Facebook. All right.
Okay, thank you, Allison. Okay, our next agenda item is not until two fifteen. We're going to go mute and we'll see everybody back here at two fifteen.
I don't show any corners. I know. Oh shit. They wouldn't pay for the paint patch. They did pay for the downed. Caved in one of the buildings. It's like a crew cab.
So it hit, it, it was on the side of your truck. I had a turkey stuck in the... Say something.
Can you speak again? My apologies.
Great.
Thank you so much.
Five grand because it hit the, it hit the... Coming down the road. The passenger side head. There's the guy that's clear and... Side of the car. That's twenty year old. I picked it up in the body shop. I wish you'd have had to replace both of those because that looks terrible.
See if it can be heard. Hopefully not.
Not too far from...
You're our guinea pig because we had some issues last week when we had a virtual meeting that the presenters were unable to be heard on our YouTube channel. So people are interested about your request too, Kurt. Okay, maybe not, but it sounded good.
Stupid turkey. There was like seven or eight of them outside of the road. First four who just went and hesitated. So I was like, well, I kind of slowed down because I didn't know exactly what it was going to do. And it just, I mean, right at the time decided to go flying with his friends. It just, I mean, it first beak right into my right front panel. But it blew out the headlight. Kind of caved in that, that right panel. It was almost five grand to take that.
My car actually...
From a smoothener.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I came out of the side of it. Most expensive. Broke off my mirror. Expensive turkey I had. It had an engine in the front door. So the driver's door was about that far. My problem is I'm about this far.
Yeah. You're quite fit.
Took out the back panel. I don't know what they did on that one.
Great. That's bad.
Can you speak again?
Kurt, can you say something again?
Uh, again, test, test, one, two, three. What was the date of the claim?
It needs to be...
I think I know. I think I know these issues.
Come on, dude. We got to get started.
They're still trying to figure out some speaker information.
This isn't necessarily a matter that needs to be reported.
This is what they're complaining about. All Sharon is doing is passing along information that she's been given as far as information. I mean, I understand them and them wanting this fair and rodeo thing for their own. If somebody's going to maintain it, but Allison just said, I don't know who's going to maintain it.
Nobody is.
So she is just passing along their information. I mean, I don't, I don't understand where the big rub is other than there's been much negativity between...
You might want to... I don't know if you could screenshot and send it to her.
She included Brian in it.
Sharon Bixler is that one?
Kurt, can you talk one more time when that's the last time I'm asked? Oh, there we go. Perfect. Thank you.
She should have, she should have the approval of her board to be able to do such a thing.
So Facebook doesn't work.
Yeah, you still can't hear.
Okay. She can't share. We have to rectify this audio issue later. That individuals that are on Teams can't be heard. This isn't a public hearing. It is definitely something that we need to rectify. Just unfortunately, we don't have time to rectify it now unless we're putting our agenda way back.
We can hear him on your computer.
We can. You just can't hear him on YouTube.
It's folks watching what you're doing.
I know none of them are interacting with her.
We'll get it rectified though.
Good. Get us back on.
Sharon, we are back.
Okay, welcome back, everybody. We're at 2:15. Agenda item. This is an action item. This is a request from Idaho Fish and Game to use a Lake Fork shop site for an ATV, UTV training. Kurt Stiglitz. Hope I said that right, Kurt. Welcome. Tell us what you want to do. Okay, and do you know that I think it was two or three weeks ago that was Jared from Fish and Game came to ask to use it for some of our marine deputy training stuff? And we gave him permission then.
Sharon, it was actually heavy equipment.
That was heavy equipment. You're right. That was heavy equipment. Sorry. Okay. And I don't have an issue with this unless anybody else. If not, we'll just have a real quick motion to authorize this use and done.
Jeff sent an email that he is fine with it, so no problem. He does need to know when to make sure that it's coordinated as far as the date.
In twelve? Okay, so I'll make the motion that we authorize the use of Lake Fork shop site for UTV, UTV training by Idaho Fish and Game.
Second.
And motion is second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. There you go, sir. That. Have a great day. Stay safe. Thank you, sir. Okay, we're going to move right on down. Cindy, come on up. This is next agenda item is also an action item. This is the Morgan Acres final plot and development agreement. Can you bring us more paperwork?
More paper. More paper. So this is a two lot subdivision on 20 acres in a, in area that has other types of lots. Corner of Willie and Farm Market. Part of the approval includes approval of the development agreement that the applicant has agreed to.
These are both little nine plus acre lots. And Kenny, here's the development.
And there will be quick claim deeds for the rights of way along Willie Lane. Got those. And Farm to Market, three, five feet from center. Any problems with this one? It's pretty simple. Development agreement was in here also.
Yeah, I'm trying to find it.
I'm thinking seven.
Seven?
Or let's see. It actually, I think, starts on... Did you see my text, Doug? Five. Starts on five.
So I take it you're Jeff?
I am.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you.
We're real slow and I'm real steady, but we'll get good.
Take your time.
Are you on the south side of Willie Lane? Is that where you're at?
We're on the north side.
On the north side?
Yep.
Okay.
North side, northeast corner of Farm Market and Willie.
Cindy, give me a quick breakdown of the development agreement.
The part, it's just a typical boilerplate one that we've started using. The part that she would be interested in mostly concerned the traffic mitigation. And the developers volunteered to place roughly 250 feet of recycled asphalt, beginning at Farm to Market and proceeding east on Willie Lane. Prior to doing the work, a permit will need to be issued by the Valley County Road Department to do the work in the public right of way. And then the other portion of it is the deeding of the rights of way along Willie and Farm to Market in the amount of 1.567 acres.
And it's a seventy, seventy foot right of way.
Seventy foot right of way.
So we're using that value as far as any monetary?
We didn't really value.
1.567.
It was mostly a negotiation with Jeff McFadden, the, the road superintendent, with the improvement with the, of the asphalt.
See, that's awesome when people fix their own. Any, any more questions for Jeff or Cindy?
Make the right of way.
Okay, so you want to make the motion?
I move to approve the final plot for Morgan Acres subdivision, approve the development agreement, acknowledge the sanitary restrictions are satisfied, acknowledge the wildland urban interface fire protection plan, accept the 1.567 acres of deeded right of way for Willie Lane and Farm to Market Road, and authorize the chairman to sign the development agreement and plot. This motion is made with the understanding that Willie Lane and Farm to Market Road are public roads and that the Valley Board, or County Board of Commissioners have a sole discretion to set the level of service for any public road. This level of service can be changed.
Second.
Give me a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Do you want today's document?
And this one also included the signatures of each of the commissioners. As soon as there's someone here to notarize, we can get all the signatures on these.
Is this a family split? You're going to sell one, stay on one?
You know, I, Alan's getting pretty busy. The intent was to keep it as a 20 and just move up here eventually. But I think we'll probably end up selling both. Try to find a little quieter place to settle when we got a 15-year-old son. So we've got another three years down in Middleton. And we'll get him to find somewhere that'll be more okay.
I moved up here 18 years ago from Middleton.
Seen a lot then.
Seen a lot, yeah.
It's a beautiful area. I mean, the Dawkins have been great. John, Hazel, outside of town. We love the area for sure.
How long have you been in Middleton?
Almost 20 years. Yeah. Right off of Lansing and 44 there. Yeah.
I was on their school board and did a lot of economic development down there.
Lived in Star for the majority of that. And if only, but we were right at Blessinger Road. So we were in Canyon County, but technically we were Star and...
Probably coming up.
And it's...
So we developed Langtree Lane. It's right at the top of Blessinger's first.
Yeah.
Cindy's got it. Cindy's got it.
You want to take care of Jeff Morgan's first and I'll get signatures for the board on this one.
Free time.
Welcome, Jeff.
Good luck on finding someplace quieter. Because not happening.
Hide, right?
Not happening. I was through Cambridge and Midville the other day. I think I have building going everywhere. Oh, the internet.
Saint Mary's. There's quiet place.
Quiet place is in my house with the doors shut.
I have a quiet place.
I hate that. I don't have the same color pen as you. I took pictures for you. I know exactly what you're doing.
What do I need to do?
Oh, there was a RV spot we went to.
Oh, yeah.
It was fabulous.
You want me to do an RV spot? I'm like, I'm like a ranch?
That's what they did.
Yeah.
They took a huge ranch and just kind of sectioned off little areas. It was awesome.
Oh, hell, you make more money. I make so damn much money, I won't know.
Right after they put in that central sewer. Yep. Did they have sewer? Yeah, they had an initial investment. Yeah, they had an initial investment, but I bet they got the return in five years. Really? Yeah. How many spots did they have? One hundred and fifty. Okay. Only on a forty-acre spot?
See, you can get all those people from Carrotton, put in their RVs in there. And you know what? There goes my quiet space.
New statement. Yeah. New statement. But it was fun to stay there.
I'm going to charge people just to look across it.
Your space, right?
Good luck with that.
Viewing tee.
Yeah, viewing fee. Good luck with that.
I thought about taking a bunch of old junk cars and laying them on the fence along the highway. Improve the view.
Wyman's is getting cleaned out.
It is.
Slowly but surely. I'm thinking we need to put a junk ordinance in place.
Oh, you don't have one. I can see it. You can't stop me. My old seven-three Ford, half rusted is a classic now. Yeah, let's park it up there on the highway. Everybody'd look at it.
Somebody can steal it. Just said.
Well, back in the sixties, Jeff, we would see maybe 12 cars a day on the highway.
Well, and it's become a speedway.
It was 1860s.
At the time, going down the hill, it's like...
Oh, wow, there's some Wondemo too.
Yeah. Except for the recording.
Okay, so what do I need to do with that?
Need to go get with worrying. She's going to take you down to the recorder.
Okay. Any of this or...
Yeah, I'll, I'll, Tina, I'll follow you right over.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks. Have a great day.
Yeah, it was whole.
It was pretty cool.
It was cool. You all good, Cindy?
Yes.
Okay, our next agenda item is not an action item. I'm going to come on up. This is a discussion related to the Idaho Power Gold Dust Power Station. As we all know, they want to purchase some of the Gold Dust property for a substation, but code says we can't just do that. I'll turn it over to Brian.
Yeah. So the board has previously considered and approved the concept of selling a portion of the Gold Dust property to Idaho Power to build a substation on the property. They, they, Idaho Power prefers to own the dirt underneath the substation and have done an evaluation of the parcel. Outline the meets and bounds. It's just barely over two acres. And it doesn't have a, it, it's not right on the eastern boundary of that parcel. It, it's kind of set in a little bit, so it is kind of carving out, carving out a, an island, if you will. It'll have its own independent access from Gold Dust Road, but it'll also have an access easement through, through, through the parcel itself. So that's, that's the background. Now, the issue, the legal issue is in, in Idaho Code, our authority to sell a parcel of, sell basically unneeded or unused county property requires us to send, to put it out to bid. It anticipates what would normally be a whole parcel that you would just put out and, and put it out for public auction. And there's a number of different steps, but because of the unique nature of this, this, this really is only useful for one, one purpose, and that's for, for a substation. So, so a couple of options you have. First, obvious option is we can put the meets and bounds out to public auction. I'd expect that based on the limitations that we're going to place on that, that you would, you would only have one bidder in that situation. The other option, which, which is my recommendation because of the uniqueness of this particular cell, is that you could deem this unsellable at public auction, which under the code authorizes unsellable parcels can then be negotiated with a private party. But in order to do that, I'd have to draft a resolution for you to, for you to consider and then adopt. So there'd be two steps in the process. You'd have to consider the resolution, deem it unsellable, and then, and then we could proceed to negotiate a contract with Idaho Power. So either one of those two options are fine. It just, the, the first, the first public auction, we'd have to post in the Star News. You'd have to, you know, do the 15 days, that, that kind of thing.
We don't want to do that.
So it's up, it's, it's up to you. It just needs some direction on how you want me to...
I think this is kind of important because we've already been asked over the years, hey, would you want to sell this property to a developer that wanted to build employee housing? Or some issue like that? This sets up those parameters that you just can't go out and sell it. It's got to go for auction.
And, and you'd have to, right, so if you have a, a whole parcel that you deemed unusable for the county, then, then you would, you would need to go out and, and auction that at, at public auction and give the public an opportunity to bid on that. But, but the distinction with this particular parcel is, again, because of the, it, it's not... It may, there may be an interest by the, the neighboring landowner to bid on an auction, except for this does not, this does not, but right up against the parcel boundary. And the reason it doesn't do that is because of the wet...
It's a wetland. It's a designated wetland.
Yeah, so, so they came in, I can't remember how, how far in, 30 or 50 feet from inside of that easternmost boundary of this particular parcel, and then carved out one where the, where the power line structure would be and then the substation would sit a little further back. So it's 2.03 acres of the, of the whole original parcel. And like I said, because of that unique orientation of that particular property...
How that works. We have to do a resolution to be able to sell this little piece. We can go down the road here and buy a $2.7 million building, not a problem.
So Brian, for health and safety reasons, this is public infrastructure that's required to meet health and safety needs of Valley County. So, and that's really why I'm interested in working with these guys because we do need good, stable electricity. So is there workaround based upon that?
Well, I, I think that's going to be certainly a component of the resolution. And what makes this an unsellable parcel is the fact that you would only consider selling this 2.03 acres for a substation. If there's any other use proposed, there, there would really be no public, public purpose or justification for, for, for selling it. You'd continue to use it as it, as it currently is. But because it's providing the necessary power to that, to that area, it, it makes it very, very unique. One of those things that the legislature didn't anticipate when they put these requirements in, in place. And so the resolution would really, what, what the workaround is, is that you have to make a determination that it's unsellable. You do that two ways. One, you put it out to auction and nobody bids on it. Then it's unsellable through the public auction process. Or you can do that by resolution just based on, and I would only recommend that in a situation like this. If it was a full parcel and there would even be the slightest chance that someone from the public would be interested in bidding that, then you'd get the highest possible, highest possible price for that, for that parcel. Then certainly we would go that route. But in this situation, you're, you're not going to have anybody.
Well, we know this can't support a septic system, and so that really makes it unbuildable.
That's, it's, it's unbuildable.
If we do the resolution, do we have to have public hearing and all that too?
Not for the resolution, but you would for the, the first option, which would be...
You're auctioning.
Auctioning.
Yeah. I think resolutions are our only option to make this, just keep going forward. The only thing I have, and I didn't think about it when we were talking to these guys, is this is a substation that will be viable and usable for the next 50 years? I never even thought to ask those guys that.
I think it would be in perpetuity unless the actual infrastructure, the way that they deliver power changes, you know, new technology or something like that. But maybe we need to put in the deed that it, should it never be used for a power station, reverse back to the county.
And put, we can certainly put a, a restriction in the deed that it reverts back to the county if the substation's no longer...
Well, that's kind of where my mind is, you know? Things change down the road.
That's, and that's why we have these conversations. I think that's good, that's good feedback. I can take that and put that in the, in the contract. They did, Idaho Power has done a, an appraisal, both for the purchase price and the easement values, which is also a requirement for us to, to consummate these agreements. So we, I've been working with Chris Jakey to, to get all these details ironed out. We just need to get this, this issue, get some direction from you as the board to, to move on, so.
Let's do it. Let's do the resolution.
Okay. So probably next week I'll have a resolution and an action item for you to consider and, and review, and then, and then I can move on to the contract negotiation phase, so.
Awesome.
Hey, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mike said he did not have an executive session, so...
So, oh, can you see is everybody sitting out in the, for the general public? Somebody out there?
Hey, what are you going to talk to us about?
Hey, there's lots of agenda on our... Started talking. Agenda is a vote for the general public to come in and talk to the commissioners. We welcome anyone and everyone. Please get involved, but there being none today, this being the last item on our agenda, this meeting is adjourned.
Awesome.
See everybody next week.